Okay, we'll call me, you're, Keith?
All right, we'll start with Melinda and Donna giving you a report on the employee health insurance plan and some of the issues we're facing there, some of the strategies that we're examining to deal with those issues. As you know, the Fortip Care Act, so-called, specified a lot of things that we had to adapt to in a plan itself, and it does dispose us to additional costs, and those costs were already rising. And so, we've been looking at some things that might mitigate that situation. We've been doing that all along, and the part of what I'm going to be talking about is some of the strategies that we've been employing with respect to wellness programs. And the thing about wellness programs is that they are designed to really have more of a long-term benefit. It's not something that you get any necessarily immediate cost savings out of point toward, but in the long run, the idea is that you can reduce your costs by early intervention, by better healthcare by the individual, some acceptance of responsibility for that healthcare by the individual, et cetera. So, we've been ranking up those programs for a while, so I'll tell you a little bit about those as well. So, I want to kind of get some feedback from you on a couple of these strategies, to see whether you want to proceed or not with them, and with that, we'll get to the way.
Mayor and Council, I will tell you, as Claude just said, I feel like certainly since I've been with the city, we've been dealing with the rising cost of healthcare. It's been, of course, for a number of years. But, over the last four years, our charge, the charge that we charge ourselves to cover healthcare claims, our internal premium has risen over 40 percent. The impact of the current year budget was over half a million dollars. So, we, over time, have made lots and lots of changes to our health plan. The plan design has changed dramatically over time. When I first started with the city, it was pretty basic, you know, you had your 80/20 plan, and you had these nice co-pays, $20 co-pay, in fact, even a $10 co-pay when I first started. So, but like everyone else, private sector and public sector, those plans have changed. We have some re-leveling plans now, Melinda's going to cover that for you. What we're down to, though, we're looking at a couple of different initiatives that we think could further reduce our cost. One would be a type of review process that really is aimed towards lowering your facility cost. So, instead of paying benefits based on a PPO discount, you're really starting to pay your facility or your hospital cost based on a Medicare comparison basis. The second initiative that we want to talk with you about is an employee health clinic. Now, an employee health clinic is directed towards lowering your cost in relation to your providers, your GPs, your specialists, and we've got some numbers, I think, that will show that we can have reduced cost in relation to those general practitioner costs that we're experiencing today. To really, though, I think, to understand how those two types of programs can save money, you've got to really understand the overall design plan of the plans. And so, it's a little laborious, but we feel like we need to walk you through that this morning, and I'm going to turn that over to Melinda. This is very similar to the presentation she gives to our employees every single year. Melinda, why don't you?
Okay, well, first of all, I'm sure you all are all aware that we're self-funded, which basically means that the City of Louisville funds...
If you interrupt already, could you introduce?
Oh, absolutely. I'm so sorry. Let me introduce Brent Weiger. He is with IPS, and he's our benefits consultant, and he, his company provides a lot of help to us, and so, we have him here today, and he's much more knowledgeable about healthcare reform and many of those things, so if we have questions, he will be our go-to guy. So, again, we're self-funded, which means that the City of Louisville budgets and pays for all the claims for our health, for our employees, and in addition to that, we pay, we contract with a third-party administrator, which you'll hear us call a TPA, and we use that company to actually write the checks to pay our claims, and also currently, with our provider is Cigna, we use their network discounts. They're able to negotiate larger discounts with providers because of the number of lives they have. So, in addition to that, we say we're partially self-funded because we have what we call stop loss, or reinsurance. So, under our current plan, if we have a claim, one individual on our plan during our plan year, which runs from October 1st through September 30th, if that individual's claims exceed $135,000, then reinsurance kicks in and picks up all of the cost from 135 on. In addition to that, there's an aggregate coverage, so if all of our claims exceeded a certain number, then the reinsurance will kick in and pay that. 2012 was the last time we conducted an RMP. We had seven proposals that we looked at. We interviewed four finalists, Cigna, who was our current, who was our provider, we've been with them for the last six years. We interviewed Aetna, United Healthcare, and a group of pension administrators. We selected Cigna for one more year with an option to renew for two years. One of the reasons that we ended up selecting Cigna again this year was because of, well, obviously, it was driven by price, and I, Cigna lowered our actual TPA expenses about $50,000 for our renewal, and their stop-loss bid was by far the best, which drove the overall pricing. So, look at how our three plans of insurance work for our employees. So, we offer an HSA, which has a health savings account, an HRA, which has a health reimbursement account, and then a plan that we call the catastrophic plan. When we talk about health insurance, I want to just make sure we're all on the same page by a couple of terms that we're going to use. First of all, is a deductible. Remember, a deductible is a number that's set that the employee picks up all the cost of a claim before insurance kicks in. You have individual deductibles, what one person on your coverage has to meet, and then you have a family deductible. And then, out-of-pocket max, once you've met your deductible, you, the insurance will kick in and pay co-insurance. Ours is 80 percent, the employee pays 20 percent. Once that employee's out-of-pocket, that 20 percent combined with their deductibles been met, it's considered that their out-of-pocket is met, and then the plan pays at 100 percent. Co-pays, our plan doesn't have co-pays, but we're going to talk a little bit about that. A co-pay is a set amount that you're going to pay for a service. So, for example, a doctor's visit, every time you go to the doctor, you're going to pay $20 or $25, that's a co-pay. And then, co-insurance, again, we mentioned that, that's what you're going to, once you've met your deductible, the insurance starts paying a percentage, that's, co-insurance is what you have left to pay. PPO, that's a preferred provider agreement organization, basically, medical providers, doctors, hospitals, it's where they agree and negotiate a contract right, price for stewardage. So, if you, our plan is driven, if you go to an in-network PPO provider, you're going to receive a higher level of benefit than if you go out of network. So, I don't, this gets really detailed, so I'm going to kind of give you a high overview of all three plans. First of all, all three plans were pretty much the same. Healthcare reform requires that all of your preventative benefits are paid at 100 percent. So, under all three plans, when an employee goes for a preventative, a wellness check, that's going to be paid at 100 percent, and the employee's going to have no out-of-pocket cost. But, under all three plans, anything other than wellness, when our employees go to the doctor, it goes towards deductible. So, if you look at the deductibles, under the CAT plan, an employee or their dependent will have to pay $5,000 out-of-pocket before insurance kicks in at all. Under the HRA, there's a $2,000 deductible, the employee has to pay $2,000 out-of-pocket before that deductible kicks in. Now, we do have an HRA account, a health reimbursement account, that is funded by the city to offset that deductible, so for an employee, it's $500. So, if you deduct that $500 from that $2,000, once the employee spends that $500, they're out-of-pocket $1,500 before insurance kicks in. And then, the HSA, the deductible's $3,000, but the employee gets that $500 contribution to their HSA account, so their out-of-pocket is $2,500. Now, it's important that we talk a little bit about the difference between an HRA account and an HSA account. They're both designed to offset the medical cost. The HRA account, that's funded by the city, the money goes into that account on October 1st. So, when our plan, the plan year begins, the employee's got $500 sitting there to offset the cost of a doctor's visit, a prescription drug, a hospital stay. The HSA, because the, well, back to the HRA, so the HRA money is out there. If I go the full year and I never go to the doctor, I'm incredibly healthy, and then the next year, I sign up for the HRA again, that money's going to roll over, and I could have $1,000 in, my $500 from last year and my $500 from this year. But, at any point that I leave the City of Louisville, that money reverts back to the city, it doesn't go to the employee. The HSA account, which is a health savings account, it's a IRS tax-sheltered account that belongs to the employee. So, the minute the money, the city puts money into that employee's HSA account, it's their money, and they get to keep that money. So, because of that, we only put the money in the HSA account per pay period. So, on October 1st, if an employee chooses the HSA, they don't have any money in their account, and they won't get any money until the first time they get paid, and then they'll get that $500 divided by 24 pay periods, so just a small amount. But, an employee can also add money to their HSA account, where they cannot put any money in their HRA. So, you can see, there's a little bit of difference in how the accounts work, but the bottom line is, under all three of those plans, when an employee goes to the doctor, they're going to pay the full cost of the visit, whatever that PPO negotiated rate is. So, the example I like to give employees when we're talking about health insurance, if you go to the, on October 1st, if you get sick and you go to the doctor, the doctor's going to send Cigna a bill, they're going to apply their negotiated discount, so maybe they're going to bill Cigna $300. Cigna's going to say, "Well, our contracted cost is $100," so the employee's going to pay that $100. If they've got money in their HSA or their HRA account, they can use that to pay that cost. If they don't, it's the employee's out-of-pocket expense. Let's say the doctor prescribes a, I went to the doctor and I had a sinus infection, so he prescribes an antibiotic and a cough medicine. I have to pay the full cost of those drugs also, the cost of drugs goes towards deductible. So, if I get a $200 antibiotic and a $100 sinus pill, then that's $400 if that visit costs me. That $400 counts towards my deductible, but, and if I have money in my HRA account or my HSA account, I can use it. If I don't, it's just out-of-pocket. So, that's how our, how the premise of our plan works. Once an employee's met their deductible, then they begin, the plan pays 80 percent if they're using in-network providers. Once the employee has met then the out-of-pocket max, then the plan would pay it 100 percent. So, under the catastrophic plan, $5,000 deductible, $5,000 out-of-pocket max, the employee spends $10,000, everything's paid at 100 percent. Under the HRA, you've got a $4,000, a $2,000 deductible, a $4,000 out-of-pocket max. Once you've spent $6,000, the plan pays at 100 percent. On the HSA plan, the deductible's $3,000, the out-of-pocket max is $2,950. Once they've met that, $5,950, the plan pays at 100 percent. So, the, in a premise, in a nutshell, that is our benefit plan. Donna mentioned that the city, the way we fund the plan to pay those claims is by setting an internal premium. This year, it's $8,710 per employee, so we've got 726 employees, and it's budgeted per authorized position, so it's an easy number to calculate. We put in about $6.3 million this year into the fund, and then, we also get revenue from employees' premiums and retiree premiums. So, our total premiums this year is about $8.1 million. You kind of look at the chart below, it gives you an idea of what's happened over the last three years. You can see our RX claims, they have been trending downward for about the last four years, and that is because of a plan change we made. We put in some value-based drugs that we would pay at 100 percent, you know, we talked about prescription drugs count towards those deductibles. We've identified some disease states, asthma, diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, heart disease. If an employee has one of these chronic health conditions, and they will use a generic prescription drug, then we'll pay 100 percent of that, and so, that's a benefit for the employee and a benefit for the city. So, four years, we saw that RX number going down. However, last year, we saw it spike back up. I think that's partly due to the fact we added the contraceptives paid at 100 percent, which they hadn't been before. We've encouraged smoking cessation, we paid for some smoking cessation prescription drugs. The medical and dental claims, you see, those have gone at 27 percent in the last three years. And then, just those fixed costs, those are our administrative costs, that's what we pay Cigna, their administrative fee to write the checks for us and to let us use their network, and that number also includes that stop-loss insurance that we talked about. Now, stop-loss has been really important to us over the last three years. Unfortunately, traditionally, our city has had a higher than the average number of cancer claims, and I don't know why that is.
But, it goes way back.
It goes way back.
Compared to what city?
Compared to the national average, I guess, to plans. And just, in talking to other cities and HR directors, our number of large claims traditionally went higher, and I don't know why, you know, we're trying to do some wellness, but just for example, in 2009, 2010, we had 33 claims on our plan that were over $25,000. That's kind of what we target as a large claim. Four of those went over $135,000. So, those four claims that went over $135,000, they went over that amount by $540,000. So, that is the amount that the reinsurance company paid back to the City of Louisville, and our premium for reinsurance is about $500,000. So, you can see, the next two years, in 2011, we had 36 claims over $25,000, four of those were over $135,000. Those four claims went over by one point, almost $1.5 million. So, our reinsurance company had to reimburse us $1.5 million. Again, we only paid $500 for that coverage. Last year, the worst year ever, we had 46 claims over $25,000, and eight of those were over $135,000. So, those eight claims generated just over $3 million that had to be reimbursed to the plan by Cigna. So, you can see, Cigna had a, and going through the negotiations, they feel like we've had some really bad years, we're doing a good year, and because of all the wellness that we do, they, they did not increase our stop-loss to the level they could. I guess they think they're trying to recoup that money, and the only way they recoup that money is to stay with us through a good year.
Council, one thing you always think about when I look at these numbers, when you add a position, regardless of what department you're not, I always think of that, you're not just adding a salary, these are the potential costs that you add every time we add a member employee. In some ways, I was at a workshop the other day, and a person described it as somewhat of a blank check you give an employee when you hire them in relation to healthcare, the way it's actually devised now. They certainly have high deductibles, but those are the type of numbers you're looking at that it could cost the organization.
Got into that, we'll talk a little bit about healthcare reform later, but one of the healthcare reform changes that we were mandated in 2010 was to do away with annual limits. Prior to that, our limit was $2 million. If an employee, or a person, a covered person on our plan, if their claims reached $2 million, they were maxed out and they had no more coverage. We had to do away with that, so that increased the cost of stop-loss, because stop-loss had a limit, and they never were going to go over $2 million. Now, that's unlimited, and one of the claims that, a high claim for a couple of years, that one individual's claims exceeded $4 million, so that person would have lost their insurance at $2 million into it. This year so far, we're not looking any better. This is this year, the first quarter, these are our large claims that we've had just October, November, and December. And what I want to point out, we've got four employees on there with cancer, so it's, it's bad luck, and really bad luck for our employees.
I would just mention, we evaluated the first quarter of claims data, we evaluated the first quarter of claims data that has come in, it's remained flat, this is where we were last year. So, it hasn't gotten worse, it's stayed level.
The bad has stayed bad.
The bad has stayed bad.
We're consistent.
We're consistent.
So, we talked a little bit about how the plan works, now I want to talk a little bit about the premiums, and here's where I want to talk a little bit about our wellness program. I've given you a couple of testimonials from employees. There's a couple of things we have, one is a tobacco cessation. We charge employees if they're tobacco users, so $25 a month, they're going to pay additional on their premium if they're tobacco users. We've been doing that, this is the third year that we've done that, and at first, there was lots of grumbling. Now, you could either sign an affidavit that says, "I'm not going to use tobacco," or "I don't use tobacco," or, when you go through our wellness program, you can sign up for tobacco cessation program. Once you sign up, then you don't have to pay the fee, even if you're not successful, even if you still use tobacco, as long as you attempted, signed up for the cessation plan, you don't have to pay the premium.
And that's federal law?
Yes.
That's federal law.
So, since we've been doing this, I've had a number of, a number of employees come up and tell me, "Hey, I quit using tobacco, I quit smoking," so I just thought that was interesting. At first, there was a lot of grumbling, I wasn't the most, when I announced this the first one, I was certainly not the most popular person in the city, but since then, many of us did.
You're not, by the way.
Yeah. I never will be.
But, at least we're consistent.
Yeah, we're consistent.
What's interesting is with the smoking ban, same exact story, I have probably about half a dozen, two and a dozen people who accept things for kicking me in the butt to go stop.
Exactly, and that's kind of what I wanted, I mean, there was one individual that worked in one of the departments, and when I went out to talk to him, he had, he was the spokesman, so he had all the questions from all the ones that were too scared to ask him, and we were going through that, and the department super, or manager was going to stand up and make him stop. I'm like, "No, I have no problem, let's just talk about it." And I saw him at one of our picnics later, and he was a 25-year-old kid. He came up to me and goes, "Well, I just want you to know, I quit smoking." I was like, "Well, good for you." He later was in a very serious accident, and a very serious accident, and so, I went to Parkland to see him the next day after the accident, and he said, "You know what? They say I'm going to heal really fast because I don't smoke." You know, just a little success story like that makes it worth having to hear all the complaints. So, we have the tobacco cessation program. We also have mandated, or incentivized is a better word, employees to go to the doctor to get health checkups. We contracted, we have two direct contracts with, direct contracts with two physicians, and the rates for those visits are lower than what we even get from Cigna. So, we incentivize our employees to go first to a visit to either of those doctors. At that visit, they do a, take a family history, they weigh them, they do a checkup, vision, hearing, and then they do a blood draw for a biometric screening for all of the blood, high cholesterol, diabetes, all of those biometrics are tested. Then, the employee goes back a second time for a follow-up, and they sit down with the doctor, they go through that, maybe the employee didn't know they had high cholesterol or diabetes, and if the employee has a doctor, then they can send those results to the doctor. If they don't have a doctor, then these two physicians will prescribe them a generic drug to treat whatever their issue is. So, for employees doing this, we discount their premiums by $25. If they don't do it, $25 is added to the premium. Now, when we looked back, our claims, our average per employee per month, average claims, now, we took out those large claims, so those 33 claims that were over $25,000, if you take those out, our average per employee amount spent has been flat for five years. So, that tells us, or it told me that wellness is working to some degree. During that same five-year period, if you looked at the spouses, their claims had gone up over 120 percent. So, we decided, let's add the spouses to this program and see if we can stop that trend. So, you're, this is the second year of also incentiv, providing incentive for our spouses to go to those same doctor's visits. So, when you look at our premiums, for an employee only, the catastrophic plan is free if they went to the doctor's visit. If they didn't, it would be $50. If they were a tobacco user, it would, I mean, it would be $25 a month. If they were a tobacco user, it would be $50 a month. HRA, for a well-employed that doesn't use tobacco, it's $25, or employee did wellness, an employee did wellness on the HRA, it's $33 a month. So, very low premiums for the employees as long as they participate in wellness, and either they are a non-tobacco user, or they go through tobacco cessation. Now, when you look at the other premiums, you can see for spouse, children, family, it's pretty expensive for the H, the HRA, $519 a month. If a spouse did not go to wellness and the employee didn't go to wellness, you could add another $50 to that, and if they didn't, you were a tobacco user, you could actually add $75 to that $519. So, underneath that, I'm kind of showing you how many employees are on each plan. The HRA plan is by far, it's our richest benefit, it's got the lowest deductible, and it's got 237 employees on that plan, but then you look at the family coverage, it's quite expensive, so the highest utilized plan for a family is the catastrophic plan with the $5,000 deductible, because the premium is, is lower. And you know, not only, we talked about the city's premiums have gone up 40 percent, we've also increased the employee's premiums. The employee paid $10 for the HRA in 2008, 2009, now they're paying $33, but notice the other coverage is family, $270 to $519 in five years. So, that's been some pretty significant increases to their premiums, especially during times where they weren't getting much of a pay raise. So, many of them have shifted to the catastrophic plan. Also, just want to touch on our retirees. Remember, state law requires that we offer retirees the same health, health insurance plan we offer our employees. So, our premiums for the retirees, back whenever Gatsby came around and we had to define our substantive plan, we decided at that point, we were going to cap what we paid towards retiree premiums, and any increases were going to be passed on to the retirees, so that's what we've done. So, and from 2008, '09 till today, those premiums have gone up 152 percent, and they'll go up every year because...
Because the city is not absorbing any of the...
Any of the cost. So, the city's contribution right to their premium is fixed.
It's, you might want to touch base with what you also offer, though, because when you talk about retirees, you talk about people under 65.
Absolutely, thank you, Dean.
You might want to...
We only, retirees, we only have to keep on on our plan until they're 65. When they turn 65, they go off on Medicare, and then we use the Medicare Supplement Program through the AARP, it's a United Healthcare Program, and we pay $50 a month toward their ARC premium for their healthcare in retirement. So, they're only, these premiums are only, they're only paid until they turn 65.
Which is very beneficial, because now it gets them off of our plan, and so, we don't have to worry about the cost.
Absolutely.
We have a fairly high percentage of our retirees that go, Melinda and I would say, between the ages of late 50s, early 60s. We have a fairly high percentage of our retirees that go, Melinda and I would say, between the ages of late fifties, early sixties.
Yeah, mid, mid-fifties probably is a better average for, for women, for our, especially police and fire. Um, that's hard work to do out on the street once you get into fifties. So we have a, that percentage is usually in their low, or that population's usually in their mid-fifties.
So we're keeping people retired on our plan for at least ten years.
So as Donna mentioned, we've been, we've done a number of things to try to control those costs. Some just to hit on, we had, we, all of our plans used to be co-pay plans. We phased those out. The last plan we offered was in an eleven, twelve, where an employee could just go to the doctor and pay a twenty-dollar co-pay. So we, we, we got rid of all of those. So we only have high deductible health plans now. We, we, I briefly mentioned the value-based drugs where we incentivized employees to switch to generics for those uh common chronic health conditions adults get.
What is a value-based generic, what's that mean? She's stuff that doesn't work. So what's the difference between a generic prescription and a value-based generic prescription?
Right, a value-based generic prescription are designed around chronic health conditions. So generic can be, you could have a cold and need some, oh, a nasal spray, that could be generic. But that's not around chronic condition. A chronic condition like diabetes, high blood pressure, those that could really get out of control and affect the medical plan and have, you know, huge claims cost. We wanna make sure that those provide at low cost or free so that employees don't have a financial disincentive to not get the drug. So that's, that's the
That's why it's called value-based. So it's not like a, a class of of drugs.
Yeah, it just connected marketeering, so I was trying to figure out
Yeah, you're trying to figure out the marketeering. Um, we were concerned that when we went to no co-pays, that employees that maybe needed, they would not get their medicine in order to buy something else. So by giving them an option for a free drug, it saved, it saved the employee money and it saved the city money for those employees that were using those higher-cost
For granted, I'm strict in conditions opposed to where they explode into a
Exactly.
I wanna stop here and just brag about Melinda and her department for a minute because I think she's just done a tremendous job uh in developing a wellness plan and in managing our health plan. I can tell you, you can talk to a lot of H R directors and they don't know the details that this woman knows about the plan. And when we talk about wellness, it is all about saving money for the plan for the citizens of Lewisville. And I can tell you, it touches every employee of the city. Uh, wellness is all about morale also. And I think she's had some tremendous impacts on employee morale in the city. It's amazing to me, I tend to be a person that is focused on wellness naturally. So I, I don't always understand that you have to do it through your organization. But what I've found is that you do. And people that uh you think that we made a lot of things available to begin with, would have taken advantage and they just didn't. But when you, you do it as an organization, it communicates, I think, a lot about how much we do care about our employees and how important our employees are to our organization.
It's a pretty tangible way to give that kind of feedback that you're part of the family or team or
Absolutely, and I, I just, I do just wanna stop and brag about her for a minute because I think she's just done a tremendous job in that.
Well, we are very fortunate with some of our programs and we're very unfortunate that our employees like a little competition. So a lot of our wellness is about competition. Right now, we've got a, a competition going on that every employee that walks sixty-five thousand steps on your Fitbit, which uploads to a computer, uh, so there's no cheating. You can't just say, "Well, my barometer said," it actually syncs with your program. We've got about two hundred employees now that are doing the Fitbit Challenge that are trying to make sure they get those ten thousand steps in. And they do all of that for a fifty-dollar gift card to walk ten thousand steps a day for six weeks. So it's all, and then I, when I look at it, I get employees that come up with a hundred and twenty thousand steps in a week. A lot of those are our maintenance workers, employees that are out in the field. So it's a challenge. We do things like maintain but don't gain every year before the holidays. Usually at our health fair in October, we, you can weigh. As long as you can maintain that weight and come away the week after January first, then there's an incentive. Uh, this year, it was a fifteen-dollar card to, card to Sprouts Grocery Store for our healthy food. So it just takes a little incentive employees to do it. We also do weight loss programs. Uh, we've, we have a new company in Lewisville called Slimming World, that's what we're using now. So we incentivize employees to go and then if they wanna continue to go, we do cost sharing for that. Had, had a lot of success for that. We've used Naturally Slim, which we had a lot of success with that program. So we're always looking for something. Uh, recently, the, just the, the Fire Department and the Police Department, their wellness committee people came to me and they wanted to uh increase their fitness. And it was all voluntary through using a program called CrossFit. And CrossFit donated the training, it's about a six thousand dollars worth of donating, of training. They donated to police and fire. We now have a donated building and they can do this CrossFit training on, during their uh program. I'm not sure how they're working it out. Fire can do it on duty, police, they're working through it. But I've had a number of emails from police and fire thanking them for that because that's a program specifically for them. We partnered with the new World Gym uh for nine, eight ninety-nine a month membership. So a lot of employees now are going to World Gym. So we're just always out there looking for some reasonable way to, to target whatever population group we can. So we've also, I've obviously increased the share of the dependent premiums. You saw that through the chart above and for the retirees. Also, I wanted to kinda share with you what other cities are doing because, you know, we're always searching for the top talent for police officers, firefighters, attorneys, accountants, maintenance workers. And our biggest competition are other cities. So we always look at their salaries, you know, we do salary comparisons. So I wanted to take a look at the other sixteen cities that we surveyed, what their benefit structures look like. And this is a really hard comparison because cities like we do often have two or three choices. So I chose the, each city's plan that had their highest enrollment and compared that city, employee-only enrollment. So we're gonna be comparing our H R A plan to the other cities' plans of highest enrollment. The next slide in your handout has on by cities. But I wanted to just kinda uh talk about a couple of facts that you can glean from that information. First thing, all cities are self-insured, all of the cities that we, that we compare to. The average deductible for all those other cities is seven hundred and eighty dollars. Ours is twelve fifty. The reason I said twelve fifty because I've taken out any H R A or H S A contribution we would make. And that includes the two hundred and fifty dollars they get for participating in the wellness program. So minus any money we give them, our deductible is still twelve fifty on our lowest plan.
And what she, let me just go back over that. She's talking about there, remember, our deductibles are two thousand, three thousand and five thousand for the three different plans. So she's just taking that seven hundred and fifty-dollar credit if they participate in wellness and subtracting that off that deductible.
Yeah, 'cause that's their true out-of-pocket cost where we're giving them money to make up that first part of the deductible. The average family deductible is seventeen hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Ours is three thousand. Our family deductible is four thousand. We give them that thousand dollars in their H R A or H S A account. Then ten cities out of the sixteen still have plans with co-pays. So ten of those cities, an employee can just go to the doctor for twenty dollars. And I'll tell you, it was a lot easier for me, so I know our other employees, when I started feeling a little sick, I might go to the doctor and want, I'm only gonna pay twenty dollars. If I'm gonna have to spend a hundred or a hundred and fifty, I might try to play that out and see if I can get well. Um, so I know some of our other employees just refuse to go to the doctor because they don't wanna spend the money. And sometimes that works against us because then it develops into something that may result in a hospitalization or more treatment.
If I could, if I could expand that a little bit though, here's where an important education tool comes in. Let's compare your co-pays and you're saying twenty-six-dollar average per visit. Actually, that, isn't really a twenty-six-dollar visit or is it more like a forty-five-dollar cost? Because when you compare that to an H S A, H S A money that you spend is one hundred percent tax-free. This money, twenty-six dollars, is after-tax money, is not tax-free. So you get to earn about forty-five dollars 'cause now thirty-two and a half percent of every dollar that you make is given to federal income tax and social security and Medicare.
But there isn't a bracket.
Average, average, average twenty-five percent bracket, average.
We have a lot
They're paying social security, Medicare.
Well, they are.
Yeah, they're paying social security.
We don't do social security.
All they are, they do social security. But the average person, so the average person with co-pay is, so you're paying more than twenty-six dollars for this after-tax money that you're spending. Also, on most of these plans, I don't, you're not, you're just saying what plans are, co-pays never stop. Once you reach your out-of-pocket maximum, it's not a true out-of-pocket maximum. 'Cause if you have a car accident and you have a hundred thousand dollar bill and your maximum out-of-pocket is met, your co-pays continue. You go to the office visit, you gotta pay your co-pay. You go emergency room, you gotta pay a co-pay. You go to outpatient facility, you gotta pay your co-pay. You go get a prescription drug, you gotta pay your co-pay, even though you met your out-of-pocket maximum. On a out, on a traditional plan like this, it is not a true out-of-pocket maximum. Versus a, versus an H S A plan, it is a true out-of-pocket maximum. Once you reach that maximum, whatever it is, it, there are no more, there are no more payments. Everything's covered at a hundred percent. So there is some differences in the comparisons. It's just you have to educate people, you're really paying more than twenty-six dollars a visit. And a twenty-six-dollar visit does not go towards satisfying any of your other, your other
And to Dean's point, we, when we were transitioning from a co-pay plan to a high deductible plan, we did a lot of uh scenarios for employees, showing them that if they took their premium savings, because the co-pay plan was more expensive on the premiums, if they took those premium savings and put them in a flexible spending account, then they could offset the cost and use that money in their flexible spending account to offset any out-of-pocket cost. So we have a really high percentage of our employees, if they're not in the H S A, that do put that money in a flexible spending account so that they can use that money tax, tax-free. Um, so we did do a lot of employee education. I think that was one way we were able to ease into no co-pays and to a, to a higher deductible health plan. The average uh coinsurance after deductible is eighty-three percent. That's because some cities have a higher eighty-five or ninety. Ours is eighty percent. And then again, right now, we've got four cities that we, we compete with that offer employee uh clinics that are open to their employees and to their retirees. This is just, um, if you're curious what the other cities offer and how we got that data, uh, this is a comparison of the premiums. So we not only compared how the plans work, we compared the cost of the plan. As you can see, the average of all cities, uh, employee only is slightly higher, well, thirty-four percent higher. It's forty-four as opposed to our thirty-three. Uh, but the employee plus dependents were a little bit higher than the other cities. The average for family was three ninety-three, ours was five nineteen. We talked a little bit about how our plan works, we've gone through that. We, we, uh, many of the changes that we've made and many of the reasons the cost have gone up are because of healthcare reform. Just to hit on a couple that have affected our plan. Prior to two thousand and ten, an employee could only keep a dependent on our plan until they were eighteen, unless they were a full-time student, and then they could stay on till twenty-three. Healthcare reform requires that we allow all dependents to stay on our plan until they turn twenty-six. Doesn't married, it doesn't matter if they're married, if they have a job, whatever, they get to stay on our plan. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we used to have a two thousand, a two-million-dollar lifetime max. Now there's no lifetime max. Somebody's uh claims they're unlimited, how much they can be.
It's all from Obamacare.
Uh-huh, from healthcare reform now. And um, there was also some annual limits. We used to limit uh wellness to five hundred dollars a year. You could only get five hundred dollars worth of preventative. Now that's unlimited. That was one of the limits required to be lifted under healthcare reform. Two thousand and twelve, we were required to cover uh contraceptives at a hundred percent. Uh, this, in two thousand and fourteen, there's three pretty major ones. The first one being the expansion of eligibility. This is gonna require all employers to provide health insurance to employees who work thirty hours a week. So if you have a part-time employee, a seasonal employee, and they average thirty hours a week for a three-month period, then you're required to offer them healthcare. That could be a real problem for the city. So we are going to deal with that by ensuring that all of our part-time people and our seasonal people work less than thirty hours. That's the way we're gonna deal with that. So we're just gonna have to stay on top of it, make sure departments are aware, watching those part-time employees to make sure we don't get any that get into that boat. Uh, minimum value of healthcare, the plan must pay sixty percent of the actuarial cost of the health services. That shouldn't be a problem with any of our plans. And affordability of healthcare, uh, premiums cannot exceed five point, nine point five percent of W two wages. We're not in any danger with any of our plans on this either. But those are just things that other, that we have to worry about. One of the other things um we hear that might come as a result of uh healthcare reform, fewer general practice physicians. A lot of them are saying they don't think they're gonna be able to, to stay in business because of healthcare reform. We'll just have to see how that plays out. So Donna's gonna start off and go next and talk about what some of our options are more forward.
So we started out by saying that we really wanted to talk to you about some other options that might be available to us to look at, to try to again, take control of these overwhelming costs. Uh, there's three we wanna talk about today. They could each be done independently, uh, but I think they do somewhat feed off of each other and support one another if they're done as a whole. Uh, one is a non-conventional T P A service. Uh, Melinda said that we went out to bid in two thousand and twelve and we did interview one company that offered this type of program. Very different from anything we have ever seen before, and I'm walking through the details of that in a, in a moment. Uh, direct contract, she's already started doing some direct contracts. She went out and she negotiated, negotiated those contracts with two physicians. We have already attempted to reach out to H C A Hospital and negotiate a contract with them for service. Now, that's gonna be, I think, a, a challenging process. We had, we had a meeting with them. We, with Brent's help, we actually developed a proposal and sent it to them. And we were supposed to hear back this week, but we have yet to hear back anything, anything from H C A. But we are trying to go forward with negotiating that, negotiating a contract with them. And finally, the concept of an employee health clinic. We have looked at health clinic, employee health clinic in the past. Uh, we're bringing that concept back up more, the main reason is because uh there has been a bid that's been done by a consortium of cities. There's a company that's been selected that I think offers it for near service. There is an opportunity at this point in time for us to do this jointly with some other cities and have some pretty significant savings. So let's start uh and look at the non-conventional T P A service. The basic way, the best way for me to compare this is to start off and, and look at what we do today. So if you look at what we do today, uh, and, and again, this non-conventional T P A service, it's really directed at lowering your cost in relation to your hospital, your facility cost. Those facility costs, Melinda showed you our, our claims cost. About seventy percent of those, of that total cost comes from a hospital or facility cost. So it's, it's a driving factor when we look at what we pay for healthcare. So if you look at what we do today, we, we have a contract with Cigna. Cigna has a preferred, preferred provider organization, a P P O. That P P O has negotiated discounts. And I remember when we first went to the P P O concept, and I think at that point in time, it did save a lot of money. But now, if you look around, there's about four insurance major players. Uh, those discounts are all pretty equal for those four major players. Uh, and if you see a bill, it looks pretty significant. Um, but when you compare those costs to what are actually being paid under Medicare negotiated rates, they're significantly different to the tune of Brent.
You're looking at, you take Medicare, you compare the markup on Medicare to an average bill, it's not two hundred and fifty percent above Medicare usually, somewhere in there.
So you think you're getting a good deal with these P P O discounts, but they're still costing you considerably over that Medicare cost.
Yes, Medicare actually pays a percent above actual cost, correct? So their actual, when you're saying they're two hundred fifty percent above Medicare, their charges are about two hundred seventy-five percent above cost.
So the way this program would work, you would no longer have a preferred provider organization for your hospital coverage or your facility coverage. You would have something called Cost Plus. So what would happen? An employee would go to the hospital and to have a procedure. Uh, and basically, instead of saying, I'm covered by Cigna or United or Blue Cross, they're gonna say, uh, my insurance is just gonna be a Medicare plus a percentage. Uh, and then there become, there, there's a negotiation of sorts between that employee and the hospital. And I know one company that does this at this point in time. Uh, they're fairly new. Is that fair to say really new in the business?
The product is fairly new. The company's been around for a very long time.
Yeah, but the product's not been around for a very long time. So I think it can have significant savings. When we looked at their proposal last year, we looked at what their reinsurer had bid as far as the savings in relation to their reinsurance cost. And it was about six percent of our total claims, which was about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So I think that's a conservative savings. I think that we could, we could say we could achieve with this type of plan. Uh, and that would be a major reason to do it. It could be a savings to our plan. Now, I think we have an employee, a population that's very accustomed to the type of plan and benefits that we have today. Uh, and so with this program, I think, comes some challenges. We talked, when we talked earlier about water rates, we talked a lot about doing things incrementally. And I think you really wanna talk about that same approach when you start making changes to something that affects, affects your entire employee population, uh, and that is incremental change. What could happen with this type of program? Uh, if the employee went to a hospital, had the surgery, uh, and then the TPA said, we're not gonna pay, let's say it's, the bill's ten thousand and the Medicare plus normally, I believe it's about twenty percent, uh, that equates to maybe only three thousand dollars. What's that hospital gonna do with the difference? And, and I certainly don't have any experience with the plan. Uh, we've talked a great deal to the, the TPA, and they do have a process to deal with it. They do have a process to protect the employee. Uh, and, and the way that would work, the hospital, if they attempted to balance bill, they do have a service that's really, it's, it's a law that basically says the employees cannot be balanced billed for that difference. Now, how our employees will respond to that could be a challenge. Uh, and it would worry me a little bit, and, and I'm sure there, this occurs with all large organizations. You have a large percentage of your workforce, they really don't wanna deal with that health insurance. So there is certainly a concern that if they got a balanced bill and the employee just didn't deal, uh, didn't deal with it, could that get turned into a, a collection agency? Could, could their credit be impacted? So these are all issues that we would want to step back and look at carefully before we would move forward with this program. It, it would take, I think, a great deal of employee education for us to do this. It could certainly have its benefits though, and that's a savings to the taxpayers of Louisville. Brent, is there anything?
I guess the first thing that pops in my head is how will this impact our ability to cover?
Well, I, I would tell you that we're still gonna, uh, say that we offer health insurance. We have a very complete benefits package, and I think we would continue to have a complete benefits package. Now, I will tell you, in the area of fire and police, they talk a lot. And if you had some police officers and firefighters that had bad experiences and they talked to people in other cities, certainly it can have an impact. That's a hard question for me to answer. It would certainly be a different level of benefit than is offered in all the other cities. It would be a different level of benefit.
I think that's, I mean, obviously I ask the question because that's, that's a concern that strikes me. You know, as I'm looking at this, it's not decidedly, you know, is it good, is it bad? Is it better, is it worse? It's the, it's the ability to evaluate.
It could have an impact. And I will tell you where we have our most, uh, our, our most challenging area as far as recruitment is police. And we can't really afford any type of impact in our hiring of police officers.
I, I don't think it'll make, have any impact on hiring. I'm familiar with, with, with plans like this. First off, like Donna said, your employees don't wanna get involved in this, that they don't. And balance bill happens today on, on plans with co-pays, on plans with everything else. By contract, that provider is not supposed to balance bill you, but they do it quite often. Quite often, an employee or, uh, employee or insurer will get a bill saying, your charges were this, we charged this, your insurance can be paid this, it balances this. And they will send you a bill saying you owe this, which in fact, you really don't. Cause sometimes maybe the bill hadn't been processed or something like that, and you don't really owe it. Probably something to just pay that. You can get it back, but it takes a, it's a nightmare to get it back. So it happens with all plans. Now, under, when they're in a PPO contract, they're not supposed to balance bill people, but it happens. Then you have to contact the insurer. The insurer has to get in touch with their provider relations people. The provider relations people have to contact the facility and say, wait, you can't balance bill these people. You made a mistake when you're billing there, blah, 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 and you had to get it checked. So that happens. I've got companies out there, it happens with Cigna, Cigna, Ed's, Blue Cross, all of them. Uh, the company, it's not the company's fault, it's the provider that has a person that's working for them. Makes a mistake in billing, they try to balance bill people. They end up having to give the money back, but it's a nightmare if you don't do it. On this, it's not gonna be virtually any different.
The provider would be the hospital.
Right.
Does our current structure create some challenges for recruitment? Since the numbers seem to stack up negatively against the partner or comparison.
I would say probably a very minimal impact, because you would have to actually have employees digging into those plans in relation to deductibles, which is where we saw a, a primary difference. Uh, again, on that whole area of fire and police, yes, it could have some, some.
It could. I'd have more concern about current employees than I would about prospective retirees. Because it's the ones that appear and that are vested in the system and that talk amongst each other.
If it was positive change from a metric, metric side, still change.
Yeah, I think in general, the new employee just wants to know, do I have insurance? Okay, yeah, I do. Thank you very much.
It's kinda like when you first hire somebody, they're so excited, they had that job, and then somehow a year later, something happens and it's, it's not the perfect job anymore, so then it falls right back down. Uh, another difference that we saw in comparison of this plan to what we have now, uh, is what they do on the physician side. So right now, as I said, with Cigna, Cigna's one of the big players. You have some pretty significant PPO discounts, not only for your hospital, but for your physician network also, with your general practitioners and your specialists. With this particular plan that we looked at, you had a more, did Dean fair to say, a more limited network for your physicians? We did see about a, I believe about a seventy percent disruption analysis. And you, Brent, why don't you explain that?
We, we, when we look at carrier networks, we evaluate who's in network, who's that have a network. We went through our last RFP process. We looked at the physician network that was associated with GPA and the Cost Plus program. Uh, and here's a pretty big concern, once we saw the disruption of providers, how many that are currently on the network aren't on the new network. We looked at the top twenty-five providers that employees see today. These are the physician providers, and about fifteen of those, half of the twenty-five, were not on the network. So, you know, that's gonna have a pretty significant, that's a pretty significant issue within, within the city because of that. So that's just something to keep in mind when we're, when we're evaluating. Not only the facility, you gotta evaluate the other piece of the equation as well.
However, when you're saying they're not in network, they should be covered. But you could design a plan where if you go in network, maybe it's covered at eighty percent. If you go out of network, out of network, it's covered at seventy percent. Because you can increase your out-of-network coverage because of the cost savings of the plan.
You, you could do that, but you're also subsidizing more of the cost on the physician side because that out-of-network charge is higher than what it would be in network. So you're paying seventy percent of a higher fee.
Exactly, but you can afford to do that because of the cost savings of the plan.
There's some cost savings on the other side too.
Right, but then you're burning your savings on paying to keep things the same.
You're, you're burning some of your savings. Remember I said seventy percent of the cost of your health plan and your facilities? But it wouldn't be conducive to an employee to go out of network, because remember, most of us who are in a deductible. Most of that claims is driven by the forty people that are over twenty-five thousand. So for most employees, they're gonna wanna go in-network because they're paying whatever that negotiated rate is. So if I go to an out-of-network doctor, I'm gonna be paying for it. So I'm gonna wanna go to the lowest possible doc, cost of the doctor.
And so one of the potential solutions I'll give to a little bit is the employee health clinic concept to try to fill that gap of a provider that's created by provider disruption.
And remember when I started, I said, you could do each one of these options separately, but you can also look at, look at them as linked. And, and that's really what Brent's talking about, is that if we put in place an employee health clinic, you do avoid that problem with that seventy percent disruption rate. The employee health clinic, none of those.
And before, before you go to that, Donna, just say too, if you remember Donna started the presentation talking all about how the PPO networks and how the, the four major carriers all had about the same discounts, and if you look at claims, they're all pretty comparable, the same thing. That's simply because there really are no, PPO networks stands for Preferred Provider Operations. When all these things started, each company had limited networks, limited doctors, limited hospitals you could go to. And that was their preferred provider network, and they got bigger discounts. Now, that has really gone by the wayside, cause all of, like she was talking about, the four companies have all the same doctors, all the same hospitals, ninety-nine percent of the way. Same doctors and same hospitals, so they're all charging. So there is no quote, like it used to be, Rich started out as a Preferred Provider Operation because they're all in network. So there's no way, that's why she started out the presentation, all the big fours are all about the same because they all have the same network, same operations. So there's no incentive for a hospital to give one company a better rate because, hey, we'll go to the next company, because it's, we're gonna pay the same bill. So that, this is what this is, what Donna's gonna take here, is this is a way to try to get back to the original idea of having a preferred provider network.
The other caution I would throw out there as well is community. Um, we're looking at a pretty substantial provider, hospital services at Medical Center of Louisville. Um, so they're used to giving that higher contracted discount, you know, the two hundred fifty percent, two seventy-five percent of Medicare. You know, we approached them to try to look at direct contracts because the first reaction we got, there's some, some conversations about the Cost Plus program did not go well. Looking at, say the least, to look at going down to a hundred and twenty percent of Medicare rates. So I just wanna keep that in mind, that we might be looking at a direct contract there, maybe a higher reimbursement just because they are a significant provider within the community, and there might be some rungings to you because of that. So that, that's important.
I think it's important too to show that there's other entities out there that already had this plan in place, and there has been no problems. There has been no problems. The employees are well taken care of, and they're saving significant amounts. In fact, there's other cities that are already on a similar plan like this in other cities with HCA Hospital, and it's been done, direct contract. And there's no problem with it.
There's two cities, I'll just talk about that a little bit, that we're aware of that are on the form of the Cost Plus program. The city of Sherman went forward with Cost Plus several years ago. Uh, what happened though with Sherman was, and again, Sherman's not in the Metroplex. Sherman sits outside the Metroplex, and they have two hospitals. So with the pressure of Cost Plus, and I think it does bring up pressure, especially when you send out, all of that employed population sits out remotely. You know, they're, they're, they're kinda, they, they're, they're tied into those two hospitals. And so that threat of Cost Plus led to some negotiated contracts. I don't know how deep those discounts are. We don't know at this point how deep those discounts are. Now, if their employees were to have to use a Metroplex hospital or facility, then it would be Cost Plus negotiated. I don't know what percentage of the time that happens with that employed population. Uh, but the Cost Plus did lead to, I think, their ability to negotiate direct contracts with those two hospitals. But Kenny does use GPA as their third-party administrator. At this point, they do not have Cost Plus. They've talked about it, they do not have it. They don't. Uh, they use the, the other, just the, the PPO, the direct contract, yeah, they have HCA.
Yeah, they have, they have a direct contract with HCA and they have a direct contract with a boutique hospital that does like outpatient surgery. And then the rest of their claims work exactly like ours, just instead of using Cigna, they use PHCS as their network.
How many of these are in Texas and across country?
How many blocks? Oh, there's, I'd have to get, they're off, there's a, a large number.
Okay.
And as we get to the, as Donna talks about PIVA, which is the Public Employment Benefit Alliance, which was formed a number of years ago by a bunch of local government leaders, uh, because we knew that if we combined together with more law, you get a better discount. So PIVA did an RFP, and there's a lot of cities now looking at marathon clinics. So there's a lot of cities where we are now. That's how we got the idea. Again, they had a meeting in Charleston first, and there were fifty people, cities represented. And then we talked about it with other cities, and it's not just cities. There's counties and school districts. The Mesquite Clinic partners with Mesquite School District. So you're seeing a lot of government entities or public entities joining together to do clinics.
I think you're gonna see more and more TJ, because of, number one, the frustration with Obamacare, I think is gonna perhaps drive people to do more clinics, because there's not gonna be as many general practitioners available if that happens. So you may see more employee clinics, and, and that whole desire to control cost. So if you, if you run your own facility, or you have a company that you, you contract with that runs your own clinic, you have more control over those costs.
And one thing about this model that you need, you're paying a set amount. So it's not based on the number of visits that you get. So that's an easy way to control your cost. And the more employee education and the more that we can incentivize our plan to, for employees to go to that clinic, you can see that just generates more and more and more cost savings, unlike.
The city of Garland has had a clinic for a number of years.
Since the nineties.
Since the nineties. And they say that the cost of a visit to the clinic is sixty percent of the cost to just a general practitioner.
So for how many years has this concept of clinics, obviously since the nineties, but how many years has it been since it really started gaining ground or taking, taking root?
I would say for the last five years. I do, I've consulted for about twenty-five municipalities, and I think for the last five years, I've done about eight feasibility analysis for different municipalities.
So, so this was coming on before even the healthcare reform?
Oh, absolutely. But the cost of, uh, uh, the cost of healthcare, I mean, that's really what's driving it.
I mean, we, we can, we can talk about it being Obamacare, or we can talk about it being.
It's a cost of health, it's a.
You, the short answer for me, because I'm not like the mayor, I'm, I'm not, I'm not brilliant like the mayor on this stuff. I look at this stuff and it just melts my brain. And all I can do is every year I look at this, I go, our healthcare system is broken. And it was broken before Obama, it's broken after Obama, and, and I don't know how to fix it.
I do.
It's, yeah, well.
Let me give you, let me give you a thought here.
Yeah, I can fix it, because, because apparently the experts can't fix it.
Here's how you fix it, Rudy, here's how you fix it now. But people don't wanna do it. Here's how you fix it, Rudy. Here's how you fix it now. But people don't wanna do it. But here's how you do it. If you'll think about it, what in this world do you spend one penny on in your life that you don't ask two questions? What am I getting, and how much does it cost?
City broke it.
There's a problem.
No, you check them out. You check them out. Before I bought my house, before I bought my house, I checked and see what the tax rate was. Most people, a lot of people do.
Yeah.
Did you go, you go buy a car, you buy a steak, you buy a pair of shoes, you buy a purse, you buy anything, you ask, what am I getting, and how much it costs?
And you know what? When my arm is busted, I ain't gonna do that.
Except for healthcare. And that's our problem. That's why it got broken. You never asked.
I could. I could do that.
And now, it's like to a doctor and say, insulting to ask them that, and that's the way it's all variable. But if you ask that doctor, well, when you buy new equipment, a surgeon, when you buy new scalpels, new equipment, do you ask, what do they do, and how much are they? What part of it is it? When you got your office building, did you ask, how much, how much square footage am I gonna get? How much does it cost? Well, first, when you bought your house, did you ask, how big is it? What did I get? A pussy. Then why can't people ask you, what are you gonna do, and how much does it cost? And that's the way that you do it because there are places in this country where doctors are actually posting price menus on the inside of their offices. I can show you a film clip that, what was it? Not twenty-twenty, it's on Friday night, maybe it is twenty-twenty. Then based on HSA, and our doctors are actually posting prices that they charge when you walk into their clinic. So, you know what it is. They don't take insurance, they don't take insurance because they expect you to pay cash. But you save a lot of money upfront, and you know what you're gonna get. But the way to fix it is to encourage people with education that you can ask how much it is. They know how much it costs. And they have to provide Medicare a line item expense cost for everything they do, from buying a Band-Aid to doing heart surgery. They have to provide a line item cost to Medicare. So, they know what the cost is, they know how much they're gonna charge you. A perfect example is I can tell you, there's several years where I've changed doctors to, this was really, I went to a physician, been going to him for thirty years, he's in Little Stone. I didn't even name him. And then I had sinus infection, and I said, well, why you here, you wanna get flu shot? And I said, well, I don't know. Why you charge for a flu shot? I was on HSA, it's my money. He says, well, I don't know. You wanna get flu shot? I said, he said, why you asking? I said, he said, I don't know. You wanna get flu shot? He said, why you asking? I said, what? Because I'm on HSA, it's my money I'm spending. And I said, and Dennis Song, who owns the pharmacy that you know, Buddy Virus, too, he comes to Rotary, charges us twenty dollars for flu shot. So, he puts, hits the button, the nurse comes in the room, says, he goes, how much do you charge for flu shot? She said, with insurance or without insurance? He said, I don't know. How much do you charge for flu shot? She said, doctor, oh, excuse me, I said, doctor, is it with insurance or without insurance? He goes, darn it, tell me how much we charge flu shot? She goes, doctor, with insurance, it's thirty-seven dollars, without insurance, it's twenty dollars. He elected me, said, we'll charge twenty dollars. So, I said, okay, do you have flu shot? Came back, they said, you have thirty-seven dollars, go ahead, insurance. I took it, turned it on, not paying. That's the way to fix that.
And I get that for the stuff, that's my regular stuff. But my dad broke his hip three weeks ago, four weeks ago. He ain't shopping that shit.
Exactly. You're not, you're not. But if you, as you heard Melinda earlier, twenty percent of this, of these plans is what causes that to go up. It's not that everybody thinks. So, when you have somebody that's out there checking that price for you, verifying that price for you, that's where you get the cost savings.
I think you've got a range of things, I think you've got the things that are on the one end of the spectrum.
Yeah, you've got your preventative care, your diabetes care, you've got the...
You've got a little range of things that maybe you're not gonna shop quite as much for. Then you've got this in-life and...
Or crisis.
And, well, not even crisis, but more of the in-life stuff.
Right.
And that is just exploded. And that's a difficult, difficult thing to deal with. But the costs associated with that and the quote return or benefit associated with it is so out of whack. That's a critical part of the problem, too, now.
Right.
You know, you're gonna shop for the hospital that you're off, what's going on. Now, maybe you'd have to make some tough decisions about what you're pricing.
See, the thing is, is that, kinda like what the mayor was saying, you know, we've gotten out of asking because insurance had this copay. It's only gonna cost me twenty dollars. It's only gonna cost me whatever. And because of that, insurance has been paying more and more, and that's why costs are going up. And that's how it's creeping up on it. Yes, it's been broken. You know, the question was this, how do you fix it? Get rid of insurance to the point where you're paying upfront, catch up an HSA or something else, so you know what money you're spending. And catastrophic insurance is what I have, just for that very reason. And I do have...
But you have insurance.
Right. I have never used it because it's catastrophic.
But you have insurance to cover something.
Yeah, if I have to use it, yeah. If I have a heart attack or a big mangled car accident.
And I'm not saying that you shop like catastrophic stuff like summer, but I'm not saying you don't have insurance. Yet, it's good to have a plan in place that, when you go and do that, they check the pricing that you're being charged after the fact, and make sure you're not being overcharged.
Well, you gotta figure out how to do that because as a city, we can afford to do that. But as an individual employer...
But let me just add one, tell you about one benefit that we added a couple of years ago that we're really educating employees. We use a company called Compass. And they, employees all have their information. And I can email Compass and say, and which I did, you know, I've got an issue that the doctor said I need an MRI for, can you give me cost of an MRI? Because on CAT scans, MRIs, there is significant difference. And so...
In the cost, but not in the procedure, the outcome.
Exactly. So, with Compass, they will, you can sign a waiver of your PHI, they'll contact your doctor, find out, is this, what part of the body is this MRI gonna be, get all the details. They contact Cigna, and they'll give the employee. You go to Lewisville Hospital for your MRI, it might be a thousand. If you go to Touchstone, it might be six hundred. And if you go here, it might be eight hundred. And then the employee can choose. Because, you know, we have designed our health plan, and we have educated our employees, you know, that's their dollars. So, we're getting higher and higher numbers of employees to use that. Same thing with dentists. You have to have a crown, you have to have a root canal. You can call Compass, and they'll go out and tell you. And you're, we're seeing significant differences in price. Same thing, I need to have, the doctor says I need knee surgery, we tell our employees, as soon as you find that out, have, find out where they practice. If they practice at the hospital and at the surgery center, get the price on both. Because I guarantee you, the surgery center's gonna be significantly less cost to you and to the plan for the hospital.
You know, that's exactly what I've been, finish answering Rudy's question. I have to pay a hundred percent on all my doctor's visits, whether it's cold, I don't have insurance basically for cold or whatever. Because that's catastrophic. If you get, you know, my deductible's like ten grand or something like that. But that's because it's so expensive being self-insured. But, you know, it's, you know, whether I'm cold or whatever, I pay full price for medicines. I go for the generic stuff. Because I have to shop around. Dentist, same thing. You know, I just had some workout this week, and had to pay full price. But it's, there is a cash price, and there is a, there's a cash price, and there is an insurance price. And I, when I, just because I had insurance, even though it applied to my deductible, I had to pay a hundred dollars more for an MRI a couple of years ago. And I was paying cash. They didn't even give me the choice. You know, and I was, that's, that's what's broken, is, you know, the cost of the insurance.
Can we take back your previous page?
Yeah, so apologies, sorry.
Boy.
Let's talk a little bit about the benefits.
Bottom line, thank you for doing all the work. It's brain-bending, annoying, the whole thing.
Let's talk a little bit more about benefits of a health clinic. Reduce claims cost for the city. Again, as Melinda said, this will be a flat fee to the city. The other thing it really does, so if our, if we can get our employees channeled all into one to the health clinic, I can tell you that rather than, we have employees right now, they can just choose to go to a specialist. They can say, I'm just, I'm not gonna go to a general practitioner, and frankly, I've done that myself. I'm gonna go to my dermatologist, even though in the end, my GP may have been able to do the same thing. So, if you offer the clinic, and it would be at a minimal copay type of arrangement to the employee, they're gonna go there first. So, we may avoid specialist visits that we would have incurred. And it's also going to increase, we believe, a focus on wellness. Right now, doctors have a standard. They need to process people. They wanna get you through the office, their office as quickly as they can. What did we read somewhere, Melinda? It's like three minutes? You're supposed to, average, they need to process you is three minutes, in and out of your office. What we hope with our own clinic, with our own clinic, is they're gonna actually spend time and look at that whole person. So, I may come in, and I may have a cold. But hopefully, when I'm in there, they're gonna say, hey, you know, your blood pressure's a little high, maybe we need to look at this and that. And they're gonna have my employee record. One thing that will be important to us, though, is to ensure our employees that we're not looking at their employee records. You know, sometimes we get bad, it's like, oh, no, now my employer has my health records. We don't. It's a separate, we contract with Marathon. It will be a totally separate company. We will not have access to the information as an employer. She will, as a claims administrator, but the city of Lewisville would not have access to that information. And again...
And that's the same way with the wellness program.
Yes.
The city does not have, because employees won't know by getting all that wellness program, you don't know all about my, no. That is all strictly confidential, kept privacy.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, absolutely. And then again, as we said, if we went with the COS PLUS approach, there's gonna be that physician disruption. And if we have a clinic in place, that will avoid that disruption. We mentioned PIBA earlier. PIBA is a consortium of employers, all basically public employers, cities, counties, special districts are in PIBA. And it was created, really, I would have to, Britt is still here?
Yep.
Actually, Leonard Martin in the city of Carrollton was a major push behind the creation of PIBA. And they've done a lot of different processes for cities as far as looking at life insurance, LTD, TPA services, a variety of healthcare initiatives. And they've been able to bring in lower costs for these employers just because now you have an increased number of lives. And so, in twenty-twelve, people took on the search for a health clinic, or a key process for a health clinic. Marathon is the clinic that was selected. Melinda, Britt, and I actually attended a session here in the summer to look at the information on Marathon. And we all came away very, very impressed. It does bring a full-service turnkey implementation process. They actually hired the staff, they managed the clinic. The city has nothing to do with that except to pay a flat fee. What would the clinic provide? It would provide primary and urgent care, including annual exams, routine illnesses and injury care, vaccines and immunology, specialists and hospital referrals, minor emergency response, and non-work-related urgent care. They would pick up and do all of our healthcare risk assessments, have the health screenings that we currently have those separate contracts on. And they would do health maintenance, including health check, weight management, stress management, fitness and nutrition counseling. So, all of those wellness issues that Melinda's having to kinda deal with, all these separate entities, could all be focused in this one health clinic. The other thing they would do, which I think is a huge benefit, right now, we've paid Cigna forty-five thousand dollars a year to do disease management. And I don't know how many of you have health plans where you go to the doctor for a certain condition, all of a sudden, you just start getting flooded with these letters from the insurance company because you have a certain condition. They just said, I had asthma one time, and I got flooded with letters. And I don't have asthma, so leave me alone. But that is kinda how the big companies deal with disease management. It's not effective. So, we would stop paying Cigna that forty-five thousand dollars to do that. We would bring that into the clinic, and the clinic would actually deal one-on-one with our employees on disease management. We think that would just be a lot, lot more effective. As Melinda said earlier, there are a number of cities that already have these type of health clinics. Carrollton already has a clinic, but they just, at their last meeting, I believe, switched their contract to Marathon. And there would be a sharing, well, let's, we'll talk about that with TJ now. We'll talk about TJ now. It's a long one. So, when Melinda and I were at this meeting this summer, talking about Marathon and looking at what they offered, the city of Flowertown was there, the city of Coppel was there, county was there. But we started a conversation at that point in time about whether we could go in together and do a joint clinic. Flowertown is extremely interested, and Coppel is interested. In the end, we think there may be some other entities that would also be interested. And this slide in your PowerPoint is different. When you're looking up here, it's different than the one in your book. Because even after we did the presentation, since I've been sitting in here, we've had some additional conversations with TML. They're interested in our clinic. And I'm gonna let Melinda, because she's had those conversations with them, I have to tell you a little bit about what TML would be interested in doing.
Just a quick question. When we were doing this initial early discussion with LISD, I had a...
We've reached out to them a couple of times. They didn't, we had one meeting where we had the county and DCTA and NTTA, and the school district was invited, but they didn't come. So...
But that doesn't mean we couldn't approach them again.
Yeah. And the second thing, the county's interested. They're just not at the same point we are. So, like Donna said, every Marathon clinic is open for any employee that's a participant. So, if the county opens one, Carrollton has one, and we have one, our employees could go to any of those. So, but for our, for the clinic we're looking at, TML, remember, TML offers, has a benefits pool for some smaller employees buy insurance from. And TML approved at their last board meeting that Lewisville and the Carrollton clinics could be hub clinics for certain of their fully insured clients in the pool. So, we've looked at that, and they've got lives with the Colony, Denco nine-eleven, Light Cities MUA, and Denton County Transit. And that, that, those number of lives, I think it's like about three-hundred-and-fifty lives would also be able to use our clinic, which further drops the cost for the city of Lewisville to run this annual clinic. This is the cost breakdown right now for the cost of the clinic. TML's cost, or their revenue, let's call it, has been split between all three cities. Because the Y TML, those lives, we're gonna partner with Carrollton, and we're gonna split those lives fifty-fifty. So, we're assuming Carrollton's clinic's gonna get revenue for the fifty percent of those lives, we're gonna get revenue for fifty percent. Our fifty percent is allocated between the three cities. Now, later on, if we do this, and Carrollton, we'll sit down with Carrollton, and we'll look at actual numbers. If eighty percent are going to Lewisville, and twenty percent are going to Carrollton, we'll switch that cost share or vice versa. So, the cost of the clinic would be allocated, the city of Lewisville's cost would be three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars a year to run the clinic. Now, we would have a one-time implementation cost of thirty-six thousand, six-twenty-seven. And this would, Marathon would staff this clinic with a doctor, a mid-level practitioner, it could be a nurse practitioner, a PA, a medical assistant, and a receptionist. The clinic would be open more than forty hours. We've been talking to Carrollton, and Carrollton, Leonard Martin was telling me, maybe Carrollton could have some Saturday hours, and we could have some evening hours or vice versa to help employees, so they would have a choice. At this time, we really haven't looked at locations. Obviously, we want your approval before we go any further. But we would look at all three cities to see if there's any locations that cities own or have a better deal. Because the cost that we just showed you does not include the building cost. The other cities, what they're doing, city of Denton just opened a clinic, and they have a very nice setup. The HCA Hospital provided them a clinic space in their professional building beside it for a dollar a year. It's very, very, very nice.
Very tight down.
Yeah. So, that, I don't know if Lewisville Hospital would be willing to offer us some kinda deal, but we could explore that. The city of Mesquite, as I mentioned, they share their clinic with the ISD. And Britt is the consultant for Mesquite, and he was telling me, one of the things that we'll look at in the cost, that about seventy percent of their visits go to the clinic. And if that happened with our plan, we would be saving considerable dollars. The city of, oh, so city of McKinney, they pay, they located their clinic in a city-owned building, and then the school district paid to renovate it.
Mesquite.
I mean, Mesquite, I'm sorry. And they split the operational cost fifty-fifty. City of Garland, they are in a city-owned space that they just renovated in two thousand and four. Because like I said, their clinic goes back to the nineties. And then the city of Carrollton, they were in a leased space that cost, that was, the cost was averaged about twelve thousand dollars for them to run that annually. So, we don't really know yet. We're too early in the ballgame. We're waiting to hear... So we don't really know yet. We're too early in the ballgame. We're waiting to hear, to get authorization from you before we explore any of those opportunities. Um, now how are we going to fund this clinic? Well, right now, I told you about our two direct contracts with those two doctors and that, what the wellness incentive program that we had last year. We spent two hundred and eighty thousand dollars on those visits out of our plan dollars. And then Donna mentioned disease management from Cigna, that telephonic and mail disease management program that's very, very. It's pesty and it's ineffective. It's ineffective. So we would no longer pay Cigna to do that. That would give us forty-two thousand dollars revenue. And then last year, we spent two hundred and sixty-five thousand on other PCP doctors, general practice doctors on the plan.
If you could go back to wellness incentive business, what you're talking about is your cost for them to go have the exams and perform, not what the incentives that you gave to the employees are due.
Very good, that's correct. Very good, correct. We incentivize the employees to go and the cost of the program for them to go, for their lab work and the two doctors' visits.
They'd still receive the incentive.
Yeah, they still receive the additional two hundred and fifty dollars in their H R A, or I could say. Now, this is the break even analysis. So the top chart shows what we paid that C S N, that's our customer network, that's the Dr. Shepherd, Dr. Zehalik visits. That's two hundred and eighty thousand, that's what we paid. The two sixty-five, that was the other doctors' visits we paid. And then the forty-two thousand is what we paid in disease management. So we have five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars there that we could use for a clinic. So if you take that number to get to a cost even, uh, break even, you can see the clinic costs three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So if we had fifty-one percent of all of our hundred percent of visits go to the clinic, we would break even. Now, remember, forty-six percent of the visits already went to that city mandated doctors. So we would only need five percent of all the other visits to go to the clinic to break even. Uh, and I can tell you from an employee standpoint, I know that our employees would want to save money, even if we put a copay in for the clinic. And this doesn't include any revenue coming in. We know that all the employees on the H S A, the H S A plan has to, the, the plan design is mandated by the IRS what it has to look, look like. We don't have the flexibility to make that plan look like we want. We have to follow guidelines. And one of the regulations under the H S A is we can't provide them a free or a copay for any service. So employees on the H S A is, they're, they are going to have to pay the cost. Now, Brit's done some research on that. We think it's going to be under fifty dollars a visit, which is still significantly less than what they're paying to go to their own doctor. Every, all the others, we might charge a ten dollar copay. All that revenue will also offset that. And, and how do I know employees will wait? Because I talk to them every day. I had a employee in my office, it was a very sad case in October, the end of October. He was going through his bills. We were trying to help him because he had, he had a large number of bills. And he was telling me, yeah, I was diagnosed with cancer in August, but I couldn't afford two deductibles, so I waited to start my treatments in October. So I know that cost is a significant driver to, to those employees. So I have no doubt that five percent of our visits will move to the clinic and we'll break even. And that's where, where Brit's, the clinics he's been working with, with municipalities show that seventy percent, and Brenda was just passing on to me today that Leonard found out yesterday, he was looking at his clinics and seventy percent of the visits have flipped to the clinic at Carrollton. So we know that we're going to make money for every visit under five percent that goes to the clinic. That's going to be a cost savings to our plan. So it's kind of a confusing slide, but any questions?
So I just mentioned, even for those with the H R A plan and catastrophic plan, we could put a five dollar copay in there. We could make it free for, for those employees to enter the plan. We just say plan because of, because of regulations, like to be somewhere between thirty and fifty dollars, somewhere in there to, to visit this clinic.
You can adjust it according to how you adjust the H R A and catastrophic. Whatever, if it's free on the H R A catastrophic plan, it'd be lower for the H S A, you can charge more for the H R A and catastrophic plan. You can charge a little more for the H S A. You can, it'd be proportionately.
So as I said earlier, we could actually do any one of these three, but I think together they, they work best. But I think it has to be looked at very carefully and very slowly and very thoroughly. So what I would tell you is we would want to move forward with the clinic effective ten, one of thirteen, the start of the fiscal year. Uh, our ability to do this, I think, is dependent on Flower Noun and Capel wanting to move forward. We're pretty sure that they're going to. Uh, so that would be step one. We would then want to continue working on our contracts, negotiating contracts. Uh, and that's going to take considerable time. We started talking to H C A back in the early fall and we still don't have a response from them. So to negotiate these contracts, I think is going to take a considerable period of time. And not only with major providers, we want to approach some other providers, like orthopedic associates, some of the major groups that we know our employees work with, and we would want to try to negotiate those contracts. And then finally, we would have to do an R and P process. We couldn't just go with cost plus. It would be another R and P process. That might be as late as fourteen, fifteen, uh, to get to that. It could be earlier. Uh, and then we would be able to again compare, uh, that potential savings with cost plus to what anyone else brings to the table. But again, we think it, it, there, there could be certainly significant savings. So that's our basic overview and our recommendations.
So do you anticipate these cost savings mitigating the projected increases in healthcare? Where, where do you see, because, because I, I know sometimes chasing the cost savings doesn't pay for itself.
It's not going to pay for itself.
And I know with healthcare, it never does, but, um.
Again, getting a handle on facility costs is the number one issue. It's seventy percent of our clients. So the clinic could help.
Slow down the rate of increase.
Yeah.
So, uh, but would, will it be totally offset them?
Would you feel it's worth the disruption in employee process? It's worth the additional sabotage?
I think the clinic is an excellent idea. I think negotiating the contracts is an excellent idea. I think we've got to very carefully work through cost plus. It is a huge change for our employees. Our employees are accustomed to this particular type of system. We've talked to directors about cost plus and I'm going to tell you, there, there were lots of concerns. So again, I think that process has to be taken slowly, has to be analyzed thoroughly. Uh, and we go down that road, we'd have to do lots of education.
Do you have some implementation history that will kind of tell you how to handle some of those hurdles? I mean, not, not you, but I mean, is there history out there?
I'll, I'll answer it from a Louisville perspective and then I'll turn it to Brit and he may be able to answer that question better than I can. But we've certainly been through massive changes, considerable changes. I, I can tell you in the early nineties, just getting rid of, of the H M O, I was almost beaten and my, my body hung up in front of city hall with the employees. They were so angry. Uh, Melinda's been through lots of changes with employees and it just, it's a lot of time to go out and, and do that outreach and spend time educating employees.
It's a change management process that involves quite a bit of time investment on the part of H R to manage that. Without it, it'd be a total disaster, but with it, you can hopefully get people to understand. And you have to kind of keep repeating it, that's the problem, especially on something like this. Uh, the first time the employee hears it, it's kind of going to wash over them to some extent. And then they'll say, now, what was that all about? So you almost have to bring them back in over and over and over again, keep hammering the message and the, and the information, not just the message, it's the information, the raw reality of the program so that they understand what they're to do, how they're respond, what their responsibility. There is a little bit more responsibility for the employee. And that's one of the things we're trying to get to. Our H R department is one of the best, I think, in the area in helping the employee almost to their own detriment. And we're not staffed up to do that for employees, so.
But our employees are. Here's a phone I can tell you, and I, and I know she gets calls night and day, on weekends. She spends a lot of her time answering questions.
But our employees, because we have educated them, we just, we don't just talk about our health plan. We talk about, we're self-funded, this is what it costs, this is what the city's paying, this is how much they're picking up at their cost. And they are very appreciative. And so as we moved from copays to high deductibles, which wasn't popular because it's hard to, employees don't see tax savings. They're not thinking about what tax bracket is there again. They took an education piece to show, I'll move this money to a flexible spending account. And they, they're, and they're very appreciative of our, of our benefit plan and of the wellness and of everything that we do for them. And that's what's so great about the clinic. That's going to, it's a win-win. Employees are going to see that as this giant benefit. They're not necessarily going to realize the cost savings. So we're going to get cost savings and employees are going to see a benefit in it.
I told Leonard Martin that I really wanted to do a videotape of him and show it and do that.
I do too.
Yeah.
I'm not the one you want.
But, but I will tell you that he, he will tell you that that has been the most positive benefit they've ever implemented in the city of Carrollton. Uh, that their employees are extremely appreciative. That he fairly regularly sends Melinda and I the emails he gets from their employees thanking them for the employee clinic, so.
I mean, I, my take on it is, I would move on. I was informed that, um, I'm impressed, first of all, with what you're, you know, the work you've done on it and that you're willing to, because obviously it's, it would be easier to save what you have, you know, just from your own perspective. We have the work, the work is hard, but you know, the goal here is to save money. I'm not expecting it to pay for itself. I'm just looking to get ahead of her.
You can't, you can't keep up with double digits.
But, you know, I, I mean, there were times during the presentation when I was kind of skeptical and then we'd get a little further in the presentation and I would relax and so I got to the end and I was, I liked it. That's, that's mine.
I would say that, been on council for a while and seeing how, that we have transitioned over here. Part of the biggest one I remember was it going away from T M L. That was probably one of the scariest things, I think, that H R A went through.
Thinking it's creeping, isn't it?
But, uh, I think that, as Donna said earlier, our H R staff and Donna included, have done a tremendous job over the years in, in looking at ways to try to not cut costs, but help, uh, what's the word I'm trying to, uh?
Mitigate.
Mitigate, make costs and do it in a way that does not, uh, take away from the healthcare of the employees and especially the lower income employees. Uh, they've really done a great job of that and done, like I said, a tremendous job of educating the people as you go along. And that's why I said earlier, I really don't think it'll have a, a problem with your hiring whatsoever. Uh, these plans that they're working, they've been done in others. I will tell you, when they first came with us too, uh, the, uh, and Rudy can remember this, the, John might have been around here, you know, remember the office, what do you call it, the doctor's office, physician's office thing? I wasn't for that. I think that's made some great changes now. I think you've done a lot of work on that sense of, I'm for it now. I think it's a great thing. I think especially with you going, with the way of the, looking at the, the, uh, negotiating contracts and the cost plus situation, I think it will really fit in and make, both will make a better plan. And I think, like you say, I think your employees will see, uh, the rewards of the benefits that you're giving them. And I think you, the city will see the rewards of the cost saving, which in turn, in the long run, is a cost saving for the employee also. When you don't have to increase their premiums, when you don't have to increase their deductibles, when you start adding additional benefits for cause of your cost saving, then the employee starts saying, wow, this is really working. Boy, I like this. They do have to take them, I will say this, employees do have to take a little bit more responsibility for their healthcare, but that's a good thing. In, in the long run, that's a good thing that each of us need to start taking a little bit more responsibility for our healthcare instead of just walking into an office and saying, fix me. Y'all did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Malfoy.
Question?
Great job.
Thank you.
Sure. Take it back to me.